To all of our Army members out there, and happy birthday. We will be having our second annual Juneteenth Flag Raising Event. It is happening today at 1:00 outside the courthouse. As I mentioned before, Juneteenth, commonly referred to as "Juneteenth," is the oldest known celebration of African American freedom. It honors the end of slavery in 1865 and was made a county employee holiday in 2020. The Flag Raising Event will feature a reading of the Empanadas Pace and Proclamation and a recognition of the winners of the 2023 Art and Prose Freedom Contest. And it will also kick off a weekend full of events throughout the county, including a sports performance at Penny McRae Mills about William Still, the prominent civil rights activist who coined the term "underground railroad." A tour of Peter Wentz Farmstead, the National Underground Railroad Network Freedom Site, and the home of Jack, his late person, who twice escaped from the farmstead. And an exploration of free and once enslaved by ironworkers of Coverge Forge at Potts Grove Manor. There are many other events happening throughout the county this weekend, so please check them out. If you want to learn more about Juneteenth and events through the weekend, visit www.montgomerycountypa.gov/juneteenth. Next, I want to ask for your help with another food drive to benefit the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. Through June 23rd, we are collecting non-perishable food items and other personal hygiene products through a new campaign called the Montgomery County Food Flight. The collections are being held at six county locations, right here at One Montgomery Plaza in Norristown, our Human Services Center in Norristown, the Montgomery County Courthouse, the Willow Grove Annex, Lansdale Office, and our Pottstown office. If you are visiting any of these locations, please feel free to bring non-perishable food, drinks, and snacks, including low-sodium, sugar-free, kosher, and halal foods. Diapers, dental products, toilet paper, paper towels, feminine, and other hygiene products are also needed. Please do not bring homemade items or items that have passed their expiration date or items in glass containers. They will not be accepted. And to find the addresses for these locations, please visit www.montco PA.gov/facilities. And next, I'm going to announce this month's Way to Go Monco winners. The Way to Go Monco program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 170 county employees have submitted nominations, singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we will draw employees from the list of nominations, and each wins $150 after taxes, in their paycheck, and recognition of their work. I'm pleased to announce the following winners for June. Jamila Bostic, who works in our office of Senior Services. Her submission says, "She manages her stressful case workload with top-tier effectiveness and the best attitude ever." Jamila is a reminder that we get nowhere without a good attitude and a good laugh. Next is Joanne Myers, who works in Court Administrations. Her submission says, "Joanne can always be counted on to roll her sleeves and do what is expected. She deserves a job of her dedication and hard work and for always doing the right thing." Next is Monique Johnson, who works in our Correctional Facility. Her submission says, "Monique shows up every day with a pleasant attitude and never fails to demonstrate professionalism when things get tough. She's a pleasure to have on the team." Michelle Gose, who works in the tax claim bureau. She's our go-to person for everything, from phones to computers, and is always the first volunteer for any project. And finally, Nancy Siple, a supervisor in the Board of Assessment Appeals. He is professional, courteous, and kind. It's been said that if you want to get something done, find the busiest person you can, and they will figure out a way to do that. Do it. That is that guy. So congratulations to all of our winners. We'll keep the nominations coming. And that will be Mr. Winder.
Great. Good morning, everyone. I want to bring to your attention that today is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. As you may already know, elder abuse can include many things: physical, emotional, sexual harm inflicted upon an older adult, their financial exploitation, or neglect by people who are directly responsible for their care. It's really disturbing to think that any of these things could happen to our parents, grandparents, or others that we love and care about. But in the U.S. alone, there are more than half a million reports of elder abuse each year, and millions more cases go unreported. Thanks to this day, there is an opportunity for communities around the world to promote a better understanding about abuse and neglect of our seniors as a human rights issue. Montgomery County has over 221,000 older adults. Over 24,000 of them experience ambulatory difficulty, and over 16,000 need supports to live independently, which makes them more vulnerable to abuse and neglect. It's unfortunate that we need a day to bring this to everyone's attention, but I am grateful if it helps to restore dignity and protects the lives of our most precious seniors. With the help of our wonderful Office of Senior Services, we celebrate and protect our seniors and do not tolerate elder abuse in any form. I am thankful to our judiciary, led by Judge Murphy, who continues to bring attention to this matter. She is bringing together law enforcement and legal professionals who will collaborate with technology and financial professionals at an Elder Justice Roundtable tomorrow in an effort to combat some of these issues. If you are a senior or a family member looking for senior resources, call our Office of Senior Services at 610-278-3601 for assistance. If you know of any older adult who you suspect is being abused, neglected, or if you are simply concerned about their well-being, please call the Protective Services Hotline at 800-734-2020. And that concludes my remarks.
All right. We will now move on to announcements. We have one today, our opioid awareness poster contest winners. Lynda Moore Singleton is presenting on that.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Commissioners, we appreciate all your support. Lee and Barbara, you have been historical supporters of this initiative, and I just want to say thank you for that. Montgomery County Opioid Overdose Prevention Education Billboard Competition has been coordinated by Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Drug and Alcohol since 2017, with the purpose of raising awareness to opioid overdose prevention. Earlier this year, Montgomery County's high school students were invited to submit artwork that will be displayed as positive messaging. Discouraging substance abuse and encouraging healthier lifestyles. All entries, all entries, including the 24-hour at the bottom, the national hotline. So any entry that was submitted, we made sure that that 24-hour hotline was added to it. The winners were selected by public voting, and the results are in. And so as you see, our first-place winner was Sam Santiago. Sam Santiago comes from our Plymouth White March High School, and the message was just wants is all it takes, and that's a true message. And so unfortunately, Sam couldn't be here, but we want to acknowledge the fact that that message was picked as the overall message to be displayed in our billboards. Our second-place winner is Ziza Baranza, and that's also a 12th grader from the Plymouth White March High School. And don't let opioids take away from yourself and basically the losses that you will experience with the use of opioids. And if you are anybody that doesn't live in a bubble, you know that friends, family, and peers are always affected, as well as your whole social life and economics, by the use of opioids. As well as, I want to just acknowledge that we had a third-place winner. And our third-place winner was London Delario from Gwyneth Mercy Academy High School. And this was really speaking to getting to the heart of the matter, no pun intended. It was just basically, which heart do you choose? And we know that if you are using substances, this is what your heart would look like versus a healthy heart. The winners would be posted on billboards. All these winners will be posted at some place. Now, the first-place winner will be posted on billboards across Montgomery County in Norristown, Pottstown, King of Pressure, and Plymouth Meeting. The second-place winner will be posted at the bus shelters. We just want to thank you, and we look forward to our competition next year.
Thank you, Lynda. I'm sorry if I missed that. How many submissions did we have this year?
This year, it was, I want to say, at least over 100, which was hard to really pick these three.
And how many different high schools did we have?
We had, we submitted to all the high schools, and I think it was a little bit under 12 submissions from different high schools. Yeah.
Just thank you for your work in building awareness.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Lynda, I'd like to thank you and your team. It's amazing to see how this program has grown and expanded over the years, and I also thank the students that participate. It seems like Plymouth White March High School always is a winner.
Yes.
That's where I went, so.
All right.
Proud of that, too.
All right.
Thank you, Lynda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Harris.
Student, objection.
Please state that, Chair of your objection.
You keep confusing, Josh. Agenda.
Please state your objection.
Pauline Braccio. Is that what you want?
No, your objection.
I'm stating it, okay? This is one of my objections, that you don't let people even finish a couple of words before you start interrupting.
Ms. Braccio, this sounds more like you have public comment.
No, this is an objection. I'm objecting to you constantly telling me, and specifically me, that my general comments and my agenda comments are supposed to be the same. They're not.
Your comment, your objection is noted. Please sit down.
You didn't note anything because you keep doing it. If you're going to note it, then don't do it. When I get up to speak, then don't do that.
The first speaker is Pauline Braccio.
I wasn't first on the list.
For agenda.
I'm going to be talking about.
Please hold on.
Pauline Braccio, Towneensen Township. I'm going to be talking about E and F, which is limited to two minutes. The two-minute limit is unreasonable, which is against the Sunshine Law. The Sunshine Law says a reasonable amount of time, and two minutes is just not reasonable. Somebody who travels a long distance to get here, and then they wait, and then they're up here, and they have quite important things to say, and they're limited to two minutes, which goes by very quickly. So the two-minute limit is ridiculous. And then, when Josh is interrupting and taking up the time because he doesn't stop the clock, if you're going to interrupt somebody, you need to stop the clock, because two minutes isn't long enough as it is. And the only reason for you to interrupt is to just take away time, because there's really nothing important that you have to say to that person. Because if you would just wait long enough, you would find out what that person was talking about and how it does pertain to either the agenda or the county. General public comment is anything that pertains to the county, not something they're going to vote on, because that is the agenda definition. So when you keep interrupting me and using up my time, that is actually against the Constitution, because you're stomping all over my right to free speech. And you can smile and act like you don't know anything. You're not an attorney. You're a simple lawyer who does not understand what the Sunshine Law actually states. Because if you actually understood it, then you wouldn't be doing what you're doing. You wouldn't be interrupting people without stopping the clock. There is another solicitor, North Penn School Board Solicitor Kyle Summers. He knows this law inside out, and I strongly urge you to have contact with him, have a meeting with him, so he can teach you what the law really says. Thank you.
Next for agenda comments is David Morgan.
Morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler. I'd like to call your attention to the J1 item, tree removal. Trees are great assets, so please consider the plan, and if you really need to, because of some kind of driveway work, whatever, to have a replanting plan. Because I was just talking with somebody, how they really help each facility, they help good outlook for the youth going there. Then the next one is K1, which is across the page. It's 1.3 million for file digitizing. Maybe 100,000 might be good enough, because I know some places have lost records in storms. But it seems you're already having a construction on a new archival center, so this is an additional 1.3 million. Then also going down to L1, contract award. What is the Willow Grove Annex? That's not defined by this. It's an annex to something important. Please define that. And then number four is the Architectural Engineering Services for One Montgomery Plaza, the $83,000. Now, I remember a long time, we had the scaffolding here and the reskining of this building. And about a month ago, I saw large cranes above the roof, and I'm not sure exactly the whole purpose in doing that, but if the project is finished, fine. If there's repairs that have to be made, well, that's something that we have to understand. So please let me know. I'm still concerned about all the spending being overly high. As I showed you before, these are budgeted amounts, but then again, if spending is even higher, then this is 455 million up to today, if you take the overspending of 181 million on August 19th of 2021, and then I went ahead and sell the future up to 2027, gives 662 million spending on this county campus plan. So it seems that these figures really need to be justified. If you have an audit going on, what's your document to show the total spending?
Mr. Morgan, your time is up.
Mr. Morgan, the Willow Grove Annex is a county-owned building in Willow Grove, where county services are provided. So that's what we call up, the Willow Grove Annex.
County services.
For a general public comment, we have David McMahon.
Yeah, I didn't know about a two-minute time limit. There's no way I'm getting through it all, but maybe I'll just come back. Okay, this basically is regarding the tent. Oh, my name is David McMahon. I live in Norristown. The tent encampments in Norristown are downstream effects of an overall housing affordability crisis in the region and the county, and a very wealthy county, as we all know. And the affordability crisis in the housing market is due to the fact that it being a market, okay? We are using a profit-centered market to distribute essential human needs. It's also the root of the NIMBYism that is a chronic issue here, but that also is a very realistic expectation here. When people talk about their property values and taxation levels and considering their homes as investments, that's because we're using markets and taxation of them in ways that don't really reflect people's ability to pay. But I'm going to set that aside for the moment, because there's a lot of work that can be done on that, but at the moment, we're really chasing symptoms and not addressing this part of the issue is you're not really getting to root causes. However, this is more than about shelters, and there's a lot of ways that people can become homeless where they're not actually visible and on the street. I recently campaigned for Norristown Council, had a conversation with hundreds of people in Norristown. And if it's a woman sleeping on her porch because her house is falling in, she's homeless, right? If it's someone who got evicted basically on bogus emergency repairs, and her family is split up among other family members, she's homeless. Someone with their family who is kind of tossed out of a home because the landlord knows that they can get in cash and for higher amounts for newly arrived workers who are vulnerable to exploitation, that person is one step away from being homeless. And I'm not going to make it here, but barring some of these things, there's a lot that can happen at the county level to support Norristown and not have Norristown unfairly burdened with the consequences of this really systemic thing.
Next for a general public comment, we have Sheri Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners and everyone. Thanks for being here for us and with us. My name is Sheri Johnson West-Narriton. I'm hoping the microphone is working, because I am here to encourage my fellow citizens and neighbors to get involved with the homeless crisis right now. We need support from the neighbors. Everybody's trying to do their best here on the panel, I'm sure, but you need our support as citizens. I've learned that, just talking with some of you through Zoom. Commissioner Lawrence was nice enough to do a Zoom meeting with me, and also Joe Gale was very supportive, helping with this situation. Please volunteer at the Hospitality Center, because there, you're not just helping the homeless, but you're also getting to know the homeless. And that's where my neighbors are not, the NIMBY situation is showing up. My neighbors are not understanding the homeless themselves. In every population, there's going to be good people, bad people, sick people, healthy people. The people I have met, most of them that come into our shelter are disabled people. Some of them are mentally disabled or physically disabled. They cannot get jobs. They need help. They need the help of our entire community. So I'm here to ask the public, get involved. It's, one of the places you can volunteer is our Hospitality Center. Also, Commissioner Lawrence, I know we tried to have a meeting about the pallet house, you know, possibly a solution. If we could try to set that up again with palletshelter.com, you know, I would appreciate that. You and Dr. Williams were very nice to try to have that meeting with me. I think it was in April, and it just didn't work out. We had to change the time and everything. So please consider, you know, redoing that meeting, because we need ideas, you know, from everyone, including my neighbors. Let's get ideas together to help our homeless and get the help they need. Thank you.
Next for a general public comment, we have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Towneensen Township. I want to start with a quote from Bobby Kennedy Jr. "There is no time in history where the people who were censoring speech were the good guys." That means you're a bad guy. So, and all of you are, because you're allowing this to happen. You know, as the chair, you should be more cognizant of the rights of the people, but you're not Ken, so you just have to follow along with whatever the miseducated Josh Stein says. Elder abuse. Jamila, you talked about elder abuse?
I did.
Well, sometimes elder abuse is in the home, and a lot of times, it's with the people who are supposed to be taking care of the elder. For instance, Jenny, the woman who was here talking about her mother. How many months, more than a year, that took? They kidnapped her mother from the courthouse steps. They were very abusive. They stole money from her. So when you're talking about elder abuse, I don't want people to think that you're talking about somebody in the home who's old and their family is abusing them, because the elder abuse is all over the place, in homes, in hospitals, wherever the elder are, people who are in charge of taking care of them abuse them. So that should be very well noted. Also, as far as mental health is concerned, the county has a mental health department. We are still in the month of the mental health awareness, and I am still calling upon the Mental Health Department to at least go to schools and counteract the indoctrination of transgendering students, because this is getting to be an epidemic, and it is horrific. If you don't even know what goes on with these children, what's being done to them? And you can look bored in a way, Ken, but this is a serious issue, and you are doing nothing about it. Thank you.
Your two minutes are up.
Yeah, I can see the clock, dear.
Next for a general public comment, we have David Morgan.
I'd like to speak about Father's Day coming up this Sunday. Fathers have a big role in, an exciting role, in family development, and I find that one of the problems lately, as we grow as men, is communication. And loneliness is a big problem, aside by your Surgeon General. So how do we maybe look into ways of helping? Might be good to have maybe a panel discussion, fathers who are committed to their families, who can speak about things that have motivated them. In the Bible, it says that's not good for men to be alone, and women have come into the world to have family creation and companionship. So I think the young ultimate fathers should be learning about being kind, chaste, respectful to women, and communicative. I think also the Monco Mamas program could be embellished by having contact with the Uncle Papas in our area, and how role models can really help the whole society. Because I know it can be really challenging as a woman bringing up children. I saw a woman do really well today. She had two in a stroller, one with a hand, two dogs, and took it all in stride. She went to where she had to go, and that was great. But Papas can help too a lot. So having that ability to listen, to speak with people, and a commitment to marriage, to really be committed to the relationship. I know, I had two children naturally, and then we had two adopted. And I realized when we got to the adoption point, well, kids take energy, but they give you energy, too. So you have that motivation, that you enjoy the freshness of their personalities, and it's great, too. So I like to encourage that in our county, maybe to have some forum that fathers really step up and show techniques to help them have their whole family be happier.
We have several people for public comment virtually. So first, we will take public comment or comments on the agenda. So if you have comments on the agenda, please keep your hand raised. Okay. The first person that we have for agenda comments is Deb Spence. Deb, you can unmute.
Good morning. My name is Deb Spence, and I'm from Pottstown. Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence, Commissioner Winder, for your dedication to doing this work. I know it can be extremely difficult at times. However, my comment on the agenda with the land bank study, I'd like for you all or whoever is doing the study to keep in mind that there is a Jump Start Pottstown program and a Jump Start Norristown program. And those programs are trained individuals that are everyday folk that will love to remove the blight in their community, also solve the homeless problem and the affordable housing problem at the same time. There is not one person, that's a one-woman show. There are many individuals that have been doing this work many, many, many decades, especially those on the margins that are looking to empower themselves and not look for anything that is considered a quote-unquote "handout." So those that are doing that feasibility study for the land bank, I'd like for them to keep that in mind, that there are individuals, there are groups and organizations that would love to be included in the land bank process without having so many barriers to entry, to use that as a program to solve affordable housing, homeless, or unhoused problems, not only in just Pottstown and Norristown, which Pottstown has the bulk of it, but in all areas in Montgomery County. And I thank you, Commissioner Winder and Lawrence, for your dedication, your support, and your love of Pottstown. Really appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Jean White. Jean, you can unmute.
Hi, this is Jean White, Montgomery Township. Why can we not download current campaign finance reports from the monco PA.gov website? We are forced to open a Voter Services voter record request with an imposed 10-day extension by Voter Services to respond. This is voter and opposing candidate disenfranchisement. The last time campaign finance reports were posted on the monco PA.gov website for download was 2019. This is outrageous. We have a right to verify where our candidates are getting money from. I placed a call to Voter Services for records for every row office candidate, and I received only three of the nine candidates' primary 2023 cycle report in return. I did receive the Commissioner's cycle two reports via email. So now I have to open another Voter Service record request with a 10-day extension window in order to inquire if the other reports were accidentally omitted or not submitted by the candidates. This is outrageous to the public's and opposing candidates' right to election information required by law for the candidates to submit. I was told by Voter Services there is no planned project to fix this issue. Why are you putting these obstacles in the voters and opposing candidates' way? You have a website, so purchase the application to allow uploads of CFRs by Voter Services and download by the taxpayers. It is our right to have current election CFR information in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Ms. Harris, can you ask Ms. White for her information? And the...
Ms. Harris, can you ask Ms. White for her information in the chat or get a message, get some contact information for her, please? Thank you.
Next, we have Adrian Seltzer. Adrian, you can unmute.
Thank you. Adrian Seltzer, Lower Marion. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I wanted to agree with the person about having the, the financial records of the candidates online. I had to come down to voter services. They're lovely there. But it took like a whole morning of my time, and having it online like the state does would be very nice. I also want to speak to the homelessness crisis that we're having here in Montgomery County. And I know that there is space available, but that space is limited by local zoning issues. Is there a way that the county can work with local municipalities to ease some of the zoning so there can be affordable housing? And that was it for agenda items. Thank you.
Have general public comments. Please keep your hand raised. First, we have Adrian Seltzer again. Adrian, do you have a general public?
I was, I thought I was muted still.
No.
Adrian Seltzer, Lower Marion. I missed the voter services meeting that happened last week. It was so quick. I was two minutes late and it was done. But I wanted to do a shout out to Dory Sawyer, and the rest of the staff at voter services for the excellent job that they did this election cycle. The judge of elections, and they sent the emails out in a timely fashion, did follow-up, had classes for us all, and they had marvelous student poll workers. I just want to do, student poll workers are, are great because civics doesn't really happen in all the schools the way it should. And that gave us a chance to at least get one student involved and know the importance of voting. And the program that they have at voter services with getting, I think, hundreds of students out to work the polls on Election Day is just a fabulous, fabulous thing. Thank you, guys. That's it.
Next, we have Deb Spence.
Yes, Deb Spence, Pottstown. I'd like to again thank Commissioner Winder, Commissioner Lawrence, on their dedication to Pottstown and its economic recovery. I appreciate the fact that you all come out and, and walk the community, taken tours, spoke to business owners, even came out and counted the homeless and see how we are struggling financially as a community. It is really difficult to revitalize a community when you have people that are sleeping on the dirt. And I appreciate that the task force is set aside to address those issues. But I also like to make note that, again, homelessness didn't just come about because there was a storm a few years ago. This has been an ongoing issue that's been around for decades. Majority of homeless are African Americans, and, and that's because African Americans and those on the margins are not receiving a livable wage. There's discrimination in all aspects of institutions, from school system to banking system and more. And I like to see us address that instead of worrying about the trash that's on the ground. Because if we address all of those institutional issues that affect those that become homeless, then we can have services as far as trash pickup in, in their new lovely, beautiful home. That's affordable because they have a living wage and they can pay for those. So I like the direction to focus more on the root of our issues and, and less on, again, trash pickup that a lot of people wish to talk about. But if you're living on the dirt, there's no trash pickup in your community. Again, thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Marlene Laska. Marlene, you can unmute.
This is Marlene Laska from Oaks Precinct, Upper Proveness Township. My husband and I were looking at the county website and saw that the youth center maintains a 12-bed, non-secure shelter program. However, this, this description states the shelter is usually reserved for juveniles charged with a minor delinquency act or dependency issues such as runaway, ungovernable, and truant behavior. It then states the shelter also serves as a safe haven for teenagers who are in need of a safe place to stay when foster care is not immediately available. We were shocked to see that delinquents are being housed with those kids just needing foster care. Basically, you're housing good kids with bad kids, and this is very irresponsible. My, my, my father grew up in foster care, so we are very sensitive to the needs of foster kids. We understand that there are limited resources, but when millions are being spent for a questionable building upgrade, it makes one want to question whether the right priorities are being applied. Also, we question whether 12 beds aren't, are really enough. Once there are 12 residence estates in the description, that once there are 12 residence in-house, emissions to the shelter are closed until opening occurs. We would like to follow up on how many months emissions to the shelters are closed. Thank you.
Next, we have Bill England. Bill, you can unmute.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to talk very briefly and express my concerns and join with the others about the homeless crisis that we're experiencing here in Montgomery County. Sadly, the numbers continue to rise. We've got more working people living in encampments than we've had in many years. I'm also very concerned about inflammatory rhetoric and the way persons who are unhoused are being referred to, and the spreading of ideas of removing people, putting them on buses and sending them somewhere else. And it's just getting a little bit outrageous. The people who are living outside are human beings, and we need to all remember that and to do what we can. But I didn't want to come here to lecture. There's a role for us as individuals to volunteer with organizations, such as was suggested with the hospitality center. There's a role for the nonprofits who provide shelter and sustenance to people who are without shelter. And there's also a role for government. One year ago, the Coordinated Homeless Outreach Center, which was located on the hospital grounds, was closed. Nothing has replaced it yet. I realize that people are being provided hotel space, but we really need to come up with a place where people could stay that is legal and safe, and they won't be threatened by the rhetoric or other things. The concern about the rhetoric is people acting out. Thank you for the opportunity. I will follow up with your offices and writing.
That's all we have for public comment.
Okay. Move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the June 1st, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. Resolutions. Approval of the ASME Local 1582 collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Stein.
Yes, thank you. Earlier this year, the courts made commissioners aware of concerns regarding recruitment and retention among the staff of adult probation, juvenile probation, and the domestic relations offices. Those employees are represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 1582, whose current collective bargaining agreement with the county is set to expire at the end of this year. On learning of these issues, county reached out to the union and sat down with the employees. As a result was a proposed new collective bargaining agreement, which if approved would begin June 24th this month and would run through December 31st of 2024. So essentially, an 18-month CBA. The agreement would provide for a change to a 40-hour work week, a large increase in wages for the employees, as well as a consolidation of some of the positions. The, it is a recommendation of county staff that the county enter into the amended agreement to increase recruiting and retention efforts while allowing the county to properly budget costs out for an additional year.
Thank you. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve an agreement between the County of Montgomery and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 1582, which shall begin on June 24th, 2023, and end on December 31st, 2024, covering all employees within the collective bargaining unit represented by ASME Local 1582. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Mr. Stein, Mr. Tretone, I know you all both work very hard on this, so thank you for getting this done for our employees. Any other board comments? All right, hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion is approved. Ms. Calder.
You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Monday, June 12th, 2023, with a timestamp of 4:00 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the June 15th, 2023 personnel presentation as given by First Assistant Solicitor Maureen Calder and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I do want to comment that on this list, I'm pleased to announce that we have hired Christine Laura as our new chief of the county public defender office. When the Commissioner's Office created the Public Defender Advisory Board last year, their first charge was to find a leader for the public defender's office and a champion for the rights of indigent clients. I want to thank the members of the Public Defender Advisory Board and their Chair, Professor Paul Heaton, for dedicating their time and expertise. The board evaluated and interviewed multiple highly qualified attorneys for this position and sent us three finalists. Christine is a Montgomery County native and served as a senior trial attorney for the Defender Association of Philadelphia for eight years, where she represented hundreds of clients facing criminal charges. She spent the last few years in private practice, but is returning to her public calling. I also want to take a moment to publicly thank Greg Nestor and Carol Sweeney for leading the office as co-chief public defenders for the past three years. They've worked with the courts during this time to bring about justice reforms that ensure every accused person in Montgomery County receives a robust defense regardless of their ability to pay for it. For example, defendants who cannot afford a lawyer now are represented at their initial court appearance and arraignment. And I also want to thank the entire public defender staff for their consistent and zealous advocacy for their clients. I know under Defender Laura's leadership with our dedicated staff and the continued input of the Public Defender Advisory Board, Montgomery County will be a model for indigent defense. Any other comments? All right, hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. We will move on to advertisements of bids and RFPs. Ms. O'Malley.
We have a bid on behalf of the youth center for tree removal services. The successful responder will provide removal services for dead trees located on the youth center property and other county locations as needed. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, RFP on behalf of us as an infrastructure for a master site plan for Lorimer Park. The successful responder will provide a master site development plan for Lorimer Park, which will facilitate community vision and assessment of future needs for the next 15 years. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.monco PA.org/purchasing.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and bids as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
Number one, contract award Information Technology Solutions File Digitization for Archives, Arch of King of Prussia, PA, $1,343,789. Contract provides for digitization and destruction of approximately 10,000 boxes of files. Proposals were received through three firms available through cooperative contracts. Services are available through a national purchasing cooperative contract. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure construction inspection services for Bridge Number 38 in Hatboro. CPR McGuire Engineering Incorporated of Allentown, PA, $190,425.45. Contract provides for full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the replacement of County Bridge Number 38, located on Moreland Avenue over a branch of Pennyback Creek in Hatboro. RFP 2330 was viewed by 24 firms with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, contract award assets and infrastructure septic tank pumping services, Russell Reed Waste Hauling and Disposal Service Company Incorporated of Dallas, Texas, $20,000. Contract provides for on-call septic waste water pumping and hallway services at various county locations. Specification 6504 was viewed by four providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Contracts for a period of one year with one optional annual renewal term. Four, contract award assets and infrastructure HVAC design services at Sunrise Mill, Schiller and Hirsch Associates Incorporated of Orland, PA, $37,355. Contract provides for the design of an HVAC system for the visitor's center at Sunrise Mill. Multiple firms solicited through a product enabling list process. Five, contract award district attorney license plate reader equipment, Plate Logic LLC of Exton, PA, $52,560. Contract provides for the installation of five automatic license plate readers in the King of Prussia area of Upper Marion Township. Equipment and installation services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Six, contract award health and human services, land bank feasibility study, Branch and Strategies LLC of Philadelphia, PA, $50,000. Contract provides for strategic planning, analytical services, policy recommendations, and support services examining the feasibility of establishing a land bank in Montgomery County. RFP 2328 was viewed by 26 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract for a period of one year with one optional annual renewal term. Seven, contract award information and technology solutions, health and human services, security audit consultants, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $125,000. Contract provides for consultant services to address the Azure Cloud services requirements for the health services security audit. Eight, contract award information and technology solutions, video conferencing service, Zoom Video Communications Incorporated of San Jose, California, $85,585.50. Contract provides for annual Zoom enterprise licensing. Contract is for a one-year term services proprietary. Nine, contract award information and technology solutions, Adobe Software, SHI International of Somerset, New Jersey, $53,887.55. Contract provides for Adobe license renewals for county offices. Contract is for a one-year term. Software is available through a Sourcewell Cooperative contract. Ten, contract award planning commission, construction, Ridge Pike Improvement Project, Section B in Plymouth Township, JD Ekman Incorporated at Actland, PA, $39,184,367.55. Contract provides for reconstruction, roadway widening, and sidewalk installation along County Road Ridge Pike, the Velcro Road and Chemical Road in Plymouth Township. This is the second of four phases of the Ridge Pike Improvement Project to move into construction. The solicitation was advertised via Pendot's Engineering and Construction Management System. Five firms bidding, the project is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder after review and concurrence by Pendot's District and Central Offices. The county will be reimbursed 66% of these costs from state and federal funds. This project is also receiving an additional $1.5 million from Plymouth Township under a 2015 agreement. Eleven, contract award public safety, software, Dell Incorporated of Round Rock, Texas, $42,178.42. Contract provides for the 911 computer-aided dispatch system, VMware virtual environment and server licensing. Software is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Twelve, contract award public safety, custom trailer, Loadmaster Trailer Company Limited of Port Clinton, Ohio, $20,030. Contract provides for a hanging stack trailer to transport inflatable rescue boats for the county's urban search and rescue team. Specification 6503 was viewed by 14 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Thirteen, contract award public safety, medical equipment, Stryker Medical of Chicago, Illinois, Contract provides for bariatric structures for emergency medical services. Equipment is available through a SAVVIK cooperative contract. Fourteen- Equipment is available through a SAVVIK cooperative contract. Fourteen, contract award public safety EMS ambulance retrofitting, VCI Emergency Vehicle Specialist of Berlin, New Jersey, $34,944. Contract provides for the retrofitting of currently licensed EMS ambulances with bariatric service unit equipment to create higher inventory of transportation needed to accommodate residents whose weight and/or shape exceeds the maximum weight capacity for standard ambulance units. Services are available through the Sourcewell Cooperative contract. Fifteen, contract award public safety, geotechnical evaluation of a weapons training facility, GCA Geotech Environmental, Incorporated of Lansdale, PA, $39,600. Contract provides for evaluation of building and site areas that are experiencing ongoing ground settlement, issues, subsidence at the Public Safety Training Center campus. Multiple firms solicited through project enabling list process. Sixteen, contract renewal solicitor, legal services, multiple providers. Original contracts provide for outside legal counsel services on an as-needed basis. This is the second available of three optional annual renewal terms. The list of the qualified firms is located in the back of the room. Seventeen, contract amendment, information and technology solutions, system upgrade, Homory Technologies, Incorporated of Hebron, Kentucky, no cost. Original contract provided for an upgrade to the virtual desktop environment. Amendment provides for a no-cost time extension of the contract through 10/30/2024 due to delays in relation to COVID-19. There is one contract, eight contract renewals, and two amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
I will make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Major construction projects.
Number one, contract award assets and infrastructure construction management services for renovation of the Willow Grove Annex Building, Skanska USA Building, Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey, $968,880. Contract provides for construction management advisory services for the renovation and rehabilitation of the county-owned Willow Grove Annex Building. RFP 2326 was viewed by 24 firms with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure engineering services for renovation of the Willow Grove Annex Building, Nora, Philadelphia, $721,215. Contract provides for architectural and engineering services for the renovation and rehabilitation of the county-owned Willow Grove Annex Building. RFP 2325 was viewed by 61 firms with nine responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, contract award assets and infrastructure moving services for archives, Olympia Moving and Storage of Wayver Town, Massachusetts, $166,865. Contract provides for moving services to relocate the existing archive facility on Old Arch Road in Norristown to the new archive facility at the Montgomery County Emergencies Operations Campus. RFP 2332 was viewed by 18 providers with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Four, contract award architectural and engineering services for One Montgomery Plaza, Nora, Philadelphia, $83,000. Contract provides for renovation of swing space in One Montgomery Plaza produced by various judges for voluntary and domestic relations during Justice Center construction. Multiple firms solicited through the project enabling list. Five, contract amendment, Coroner's Building Furniture, Kirchner Office Furniture of King of Prussia, PA, $11,429.20. Original contract provided for furniture installation services at the new Coroner's Building on the Emergency Operations Center campus. Amendment provides for updates to original proposal for required items to complete project and store, storage fees incurred due to building construction being incomplete.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion passes two to one. Awards of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Number one, contract award mobile data terminal upgrade, Metropolitan Communications, Incorporated of Eddy Stone, PA, $46,398.32. Contract provides for a mobile data terminal equipment upgrade for Delaware County. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award vehicle upfitting services, Avis Incorporated Wardminster, PA, $33,683.7. Contract provides for vehicle upfitting services for the Philadelphia Police Department Bomb Disposal Unit. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Any closing commissioner comments? I will announce that our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be June 29th, 2023, and I'll make a motion to adjourn the June 15th, 2023, meeting in the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. We will convene Salary Board, and I see the Controller will be joining us virtually.
Hi, I'm here. It says my video is disabled, which is fine. I can hear you, so.
Okay, thank you. We can hear you too.
Great.
All right, is there any public comment on Salary Board? All right, Ms. Calder.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:30 a.m. Of note, we have two employees retiring from the Office of the Treasurer after 29 years of service, Geraldine Gaudio and Elizabeth Kincaid. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the June 15th, 2023 Salary Board presentation as given by the First Assistant Solicitor, Maureen Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any-
Ken, I would, Commissioner Lawrence, I would like to comment just briefly on the two retirees.
Okay.
I just want to thank them. We've worked very closely with both Geraldine and Betty Anne, and we really appreciate their, each 29 years of service, and wish them a good retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Controller Sanchez. Any other comments? Then we will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Okay, motion passes. And then the second motion is for primary election day pay. I will make a motion that Montgomery County will provide 2023 primary election supplemental pay to employees as outlined in the exhibit. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And then we have Mr. Bill Caldwell here to speak about two of our retirees. Mr. Caldwell.
Got them somewhere. Commissioners and Salary Board members, normally I would come up here and say it's a pleasure to speak with you, and normally it is, but it's a little bittersweet today. This is only the second time in my 11 years that I've had anyone retire from the department. So it's, and I have two long-term, long, long-term employees of 29 years that are different so within a month of each other. So it is bittersweet for us at the Treasurer's Office. And I also wanted to convey from the Treasurer himself, Treasurer Salas, who had a, who couldn't be here today with us. He had a previously scheduled, not appointment, but an event with his daughter. So he has to be with his daughter today, so I will, I will be speaking for him. And definitely, he also agrees that this is a bittersweet day for us. So as everyone has said, we have two, two long-term employees that have, that are retiring. And I'm going to talk about both of them individually a little bit. So let me first go to, and I'll do it in order, I believe, of how they, when they were hired in to the county back in 1994. And the first one is Betty Anne Kincaid, who could not be with us today. But I think it's safe to say that anybody who has dealt with any money or revenue that comes into this organization for the last at least 10 or 15 years has dealt with Betty Anne on some level or other. Anybody in finance in the departments certainly knows her. She is the person who really has been in charge of making sure that we get all of the revenue that comes into the county accounted for in the proper place, so that departments know how much they have to spend and, and can be assured that the money that's in is properly handled. And Betty Anne has done that for years and years, and we will miss her. We will miss the information that, Betty Anne has more information in her head than, or has lost more information out of her head than I will probably ever have in mind about how things work here and where things go. So she'll be missed. You know, she was, she was, as all of you know, a kind, both a kind and persistent person. Anybody who ever got an email from her knows that if you didn't answer her, she would give you an email again, and again, and again, and again, until she got the information she wanted. But she, she was, in all of that, just a kind and wonderful person. She's intelligent, dedicated to her job, and really adaptable. And I think that the last two or three years have spoken to that. And they spoke to that with lots of people, but with Betty Anne in particular, who really helped us get, get through the transition from our old accounting system into our new one, and do it as flawlessly as we could do it, and with as little fuss as we could. But there's a couple of things that I think people probably don't know about Betty Anne, and I just want to, want to bring those out, because, you know, beyond work, there was the person. Betty Anne was, was one of, in my opinion, one of the most well-read people I knew. She was well-traveled, cultured, and she was really not afraid of anything or anyone. I would, there were a number of times that I would be out in the public at a concert or something, some bizarre little, little gathering, and there would be Betty Anne with a bunch of her friends in a yard chair, ready to go see that concert or do whatever it was she was doing. She traveled every year outside of the country, and, and really, I think, I think has had a, a life well-lived. So we will miss her, and we will miss her stories, and we'll miss her, all of the things she does, or has done for the county. So we definitely want to, want to thank her for her service. The other person who I will speak about is Geraldine Gaudio, and Geraldine is with us today. And I'm probably going to make you cry, so come on up. Geraldine is another person that I am guessing most everyone in this county who's ever dealt with a dime has known, or has known about and heard about. And Geraldine has been one of the rocks of our department, and, and somebody who I could personally, and the Treasurer, could personally rely on to get a job done and not have to be looked after, and do it right, do it right the first time, and know when to come and say, hey, we have a problem. You were it. You, we just counted on you and didn't, you did. And, and there is not a lot of things you can say other than thank you for that, because that is a wonderful, that's a wonderful thing. So Geraldine, thank you for that. So 1994, we were pretty young in 1994. You were coming in here. I was at least three jobs away from being here, wasn't I?
You were younger than, you were younger than me.
You know, like I said, for the last 11, we've worked together, and it has been truly wonderful. And I'm going to tell some of the folks here why it's been truly wonderful. Look, in a, in a financial position like you had, there's a couple of things that you need. First off is integrity, and second off is accuracy, and you had those in, in abundance. There was never, ever, ever a time where I couldn't rely on the numbers you put on a page being, being accurate, right. And, and as you would say, you had every I, I dotted and T crossed.
That's right.
You know, your eye for detail really, really made you part of the team that we, we will miss greatly. You understood how to put documentation together. I, again, could rely on everything that you did being absolutely auditable the day after it was done. And, and again, for, you know, for the county, that's a huge thing, when, when you've got employees that you know you can rely on to make it transparent and do it every day consistently. That really was, was important to us. And, you know, I think the other thing that, that people, people need to know about you is, is that every day, you got a little bit of chaos on your desk. From every department came something that was unusual, and you managed that chaos with, with, again, with the detail and the, the-
You're making me cry.
Everything that we needed, we needed to have done. So, and lastly, you were always able to communicate with, with myself, with the Treasurer, and I think with everybody else out there, when there was a problem and when we needed to get, when we needed to step it up and get, get it done right. You had the ability to do that and to tell us that, and you weren't afraid to do that. So those are the things that, that, that we will appreciate, that I appreciate, and I think that everybody appreciates from you. But definitely when you knew where every dime went, where every dime was supposed to be, when they were going to spend it, how they were going to spend it, why they were going to spend it sometimes. So thank you for those, those years of service, and we will, we'll miss you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything to everyone?
Just, I enjoyed my 29 years here. I've learned a lot. I never anticipated to be here 29 years, but it was quite a, an experience. And I thank everybody that I work for, past Treasurers, past deputies, second deputies, and I will definitely take that to the next chapter. So, thank you.
Thank you for your 29 years of service. Now, it's not official till we adjourn the meeting, so if you want to rescind, you still have about a minute to rescind if you'd like to. No? No, you're going to-
Thank you.
Mr. Caldwell, thank you very much. You represented the Treasurer quite ably, and I will make sure that I let him know. So, and congratulations to our retirees. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the June 15th, 2023 meeting in Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.